And she said, yes, I said, can you tell me what's on the bill? And she goes street utility. Things a sewer, the sewage treatment for that nine dollars and seventy some cents could go up to a little over thirty. But the whole of the bill is not troubling. She goes, oh, I was so worried. So I can't afford a hundred and eighty dollars a month. But yeah, a lot of people, the story didn't, and the headline definitely didn't help with that.
Yeah.
So we'll be talking about interim.
That's probably intended.
Yes. So I was just thinking, you know, if there was some like employee who worked, I don't know, like the city of Bedford or something, you know? And they had like lots of big shady little stuff and they thought, you know, what would be really fun? I didn't have guns hearing me.
I'm not hearing you.
Okay. I was thinking like, if there was like some season employee said, you know what I've never done? I've never been a city interim city manager for a small town coming back from a big fire. It'd be fun.
Yeah. Yeah. If you're, that's your definition of fun. I'm a little worried about you.
Anybody interested in the button answer?
Yes.
Yes. Um, so according to one popular theory, no one really knows the facts, but according to one popular theory, it comes from the Victorian days when women were dressed by servants. And that according to this theory, um, the buttons were on the opposite side than men's. To make it easier for servants to button up their employees dresses right. It's an interesting theory. I, uh, I thought men had servants as well, though. Didn't, I mean, I watched too many movies, I think.
And so may I just a quick check on attendance today? Anna buyer, uh, I have not heard from her. So I do expect her and Dave said he'll be a bit late tonight.
Yeah. So, um, we just, uh, talked about in the absence of a quorum, we'll open, close and have a presentation. So I'll wait a couple more minutes and then we'll just. It doesn't sound like we're going to have a quorum, so.
Hey, John, is there a written report on, um, what you're gonna be presenting tonight?
It's just the, the presentation, but Jordan has it so she can provide it to you if she hasn't already.
Okay.
Most of what's in there in the presentation is what I would put in a, in a written report anyway for now.
Okay.
Um, okay. Well, I'm just going to go ahead and call this meeting to order of August 2nd. The, uh, study session for talent, city of talent, roll call, please. Okay. So without a quorum, we'll go ahead and close the meeting, uh, the study session of August 2nd, the city of talent. And do we need to have this on?
Uh, there is some audience members tonight.
There's some what?
Audience members via Zoom.
Okay.
And so I will ask, uh, for those that want to stay voluntarily to just listen to the presentation by John and Ryan, the stable, let's keep them on. At least for our presenters so that folks online can hear as well.
Okay, we can do that. Well, I will share screen and we will do the presentation. So mayor and council members, we appreciate the opportunity to share with you an update on the regional wastewater facility and some large increases in fees that are going to be coming here in the next several years in order for us to stay in compliance with the permit. And what I, what I want to do and what Ryan and I would like to do is to get a little background. Basically, how did we get here? What, what's, what's occurred to get us in this position? What we're doing to, to deal with, with the, with the position that we're in. And then, um, Ryan's going to cover basically how we're going to finance this and to complete the project. So, you know, the bottom line is significant upgrades to the plant are required and we wanted to get this on your radar now. It is not going to be cheap. And as I mentioned, we wanted to just cover some, basically how did we get here? And then the financing portion of it. So the overview of the, the regional wastewater reclamation facility. So the, the, this facility serves all of the Bear Creek drainage. So pretty much all of the cities that, um, that were the drainage then which the city resides goes to Bear Creek, um, is served by this facility except Ash, Ashen's the only one that's not in there. So talent, Phoenix, Jacksonville, Central Point and Medford are all part, um, that, uh, their affluent goes to the regional water reclamation facility. In addition to that, Eagle Point does as well, all of White City, which, um, taken in, in aggregate is a fairly large community, you know, approaching, you know, eight to 10,000 people. Um, and then we have several unincorporated areas between the cities um, that are also hooked up to the regional, um, system. Um, the population served today is about a hundred and sixty thousand, a little bit over that, and it's projected to go about two hundred and twelve thousand into the future. This map just shows the boundary area of Rogue Valley Sanitary Sewer. And that's all the area that does drain to the regional reclamation facility. You can see Eagle Point in there. White City, Central Point, Jacksonville, Medford, and then the town, the Phoenix and talent as well. And you can see the little sewage lines that go north and south of, of your community. Those areas also go to the regional reclamation facility. So just a little bit of history, the, this facility was, um, the city took it over in nineteen forty-eight. This used to, the White City area used to be Camp White and Camp White was a very large military base. As many people know, that military base had its own sewage treatment plant. And we took it over, the city took it over nineteen forty-eight. Pretty much the entire plant was reconstructed in nineteen seventy, and then there's been significant additions and expansions since that point. We treated about eighteen million gallons of waste every single day. That number can increase during winter storms significantly. So the average flow is about eighteen million gallons, but it's not uncommon to see sixty or seventy million gallons, um, in the wintertime flowing through the plant. That is a, that is a lot of effluent that's flowing through that facility. The treatment that we use there are pretty traditional treatments. We do primary and secondary treatment with disinfection right before enters the Rogue River. And so basically the secondary treatment, um, is a suspended growth and activated sludge. And don't want to get too technical, but basically what that is, is it's using microorganisms, it's using natural processes. And in, in just putting it in the, the, the plainest of terms, we're farming bugs and we're farming microorganisms that eat the, 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 uh, the waste materials that when people flush, that's where it goes. And we're farming those, those, uh, those, uh, microorganisms, keeping them healthy so they can process. That's the primary treatment that we do. The solids that we remain, we send to an anaerobic digester and it's basically a big vessel where that sludge goes and the micro, and it's a different set of microorganisms in, in there that, that digest and eat the, the sludge and what remains is taken to the landfill. Um, I would note that that, that solids treatment produces a lot of methane and we collect that methane and we burn it in a co-generation plant to power the facility. So we recycle that in a sense. So this is just a snapshot of, of the facility itself. The areas there in purple is the, the, the headworks and the, um, uh, grit chamber. And it's the first treatment, it's screening large material. Number five there is the primary treatment, everything in the yellow is the secondary treatment. And then it goes to what you see in the blue, uh, numbers twenty-two and twenty-three and a number eleven. And that's where it discharges, it's treated, it's treated with chlorine. And then we can't discharge chlorine of the Rogue River because it's very toxic to fish. So we treat it again with a bisodium product and it strips the chlorine out. So it's safe to put it into the river. And then all those other, um, um, larger areas you see are, um, lagoons where we, we store the sludge and then we dry the sludge before we take it to the landfill. So one of the reasons that we're, we're here is because in nineteen, uh, or in two thousand and eighteen, the Northwest Environmental Act Advocates NWA brought a lawsuit against the city. And they were claiming that the city was in violation of the Clean Water Act because of algae growth in the river impacts to the biologic community, odor, foaming, et cetera. And really what this was about had more to do with NWA was very critical of DEQ. Feeling like DEQ wasn't enforcing the permit to a level that they should have been. Probably less against the city, but they were very critical of DEQ. DEQ repeatedly was his event on record, the city has never been in violation of our permit. Then or now, we have not ever violated our permit, but NWA was very aggressive in this action. That lawsuit is currently stayed pending the upgrade of our permit. And you're going to see how this, um, relates here in a second. So the federal Clean Water Act prohibits us from discharging any pollutants into waters of the state. The Rogue River is clearly a water of the state. And so it's, it's against the law to put any pollutants in there. Well, when that act was passed in the nineteen seventies, it was recognized that municipal, um, uh, treatment plants, large industrial operations, there's only so much you can do. And so some pollution has to be allowed. And so what the NPDS permit system does, it says, you're allowed to discharge this amount, but you're not allowed to discharge this much. This, this pollutant can only be at this level, this complete, this pollutant has to be below this level. So it's a permit that regulates all that kind of stuff. We had a permit in place, uh, the last one was issued in December of two thousand and eleven, and that permit actually expired in two thousand and sixteen. When it expired, it's the, the conditions stay into effect. This is one of the issues that NWA had with the, with DEQ is this, this permit expired and DEQ, why didn't you issue the city a new permit? And why are you letting him operate under this old permit? Throughout this time period, the city was always in compliance, so with the, with the permit. So here's what changed everything. In two thousand and twenty-one, in August, DEQ issued us a new NPDS permit. And that permit required significant reductions in nitrogen and phosphorus and reductions in temperature. And when I say significant, I'm talking in the neighborhood of seventy to eighty percent reductions of what the previous permit did. The problem with that is our current plant is completely incapable of meeting that permit condition. We said, there's no way to tweak the existing plant to meet that condition. So that is a very high standard. It's a high enough standard, the city was very concerned about the cost and in our ability to meet that. And so we appealed the permit and we said, this is too stringent. This is not going to be fair to the, the ratepayers. NWA also appealed the permit and said, um, DEQ, you're not nearly stringent, stringent enough. You guys didn't go nearly far enough. You need to dial this down even further. And so in December of last year, a judge made a ruling and basically what the judge says, you're both wrong. City, this is not an unreasonable permit condition, comply with it. NWA, the permit is not too lax, it's appropriate for the conditions. So it's fine. So basically the permit stands as issued. And so in a sense, we both lost, but where the city's at is now we have to comply with the permit. So in the permit, the, uh, the Department of Environmental Quality recognized that there was no way for our current plant to meet these permit conditions. They understood that our current plant couldn't do this. So they required a significant upgrade of the plant as part of the permit. So next month, we're required to submit a new facility plan to DEQ to say, here's what it's going to take to upgrade the plant. After that, we have to submit a preliminary design, which is basically the start of the detailed design of the plant next year. Two years after that, we have to submit a final design, which is basically plans and specifications ready to build a new plant. Um, and then, then we have to do so by twenty twenty-eight, we have to have the new plant constructed and completely built. And then by twenty thirty, we have to be meeting all new permit conditions. That's a pretty aggressive schedule for facility of, uh, an upgrade of this significance. So to, to do this, we contracted with a couple of, um, engineering firms that specialize in wastewater treatment plant. The facility plan is wrapping up, it'll be submitted to DEQ next month per our permit condition. And it answers the question, what is, what do we need to do to the plant to meet these permit conditions? This study really, um, analyzed a broad range of alternatives, different technologies, different costs in order for us to do this. And so as we did this, there was three different alternatives that were, were studied. Alternative one is what I would call basically a traditional approach. It's, it's the same, it's essentially the same technologies that we're using in the plant today, but it's greatly expanded. And the way that that treats the water is the longer those micron organisms can chomp on the, the waste stream, the more they'll clean it up. And so this large expansion is basically a similar technology that we have today, but it's slowing the process down. So it gets treated to a much higher level. But you can see in this graphic, anything in, um, in, in blue is new. And so if you look at the existing facilities and everything in blue, and you can see this is a significant upgrade. I mean, it's almost doubling the size of the plant in some respects. In addition, we're adding some, um, some disinfection chambers and some additional techniques to, to, to treat it. But largely it's a similar process. Yes, it does. And if the capacity is increased to deal with the twenty forty-five projected flows. The second alternative that, that we, um, paid a lot of attention to, it was kind of the finalists, you'd say, was a, a, a system called AGS. And AGS is, uh, activated granular solids. This is a proprietary system, a company owns this technology. It's used in, um, uh, Europe quite a bit. And it is, uh, what I would call kind of a black box technology. It's, it's proprietary, they kind of own the rights on how it works. Um, it does produce some very clean water and it was one of the finalists that we used. And I'll talk about why we didn't pursue this one in a second. And then the last alternative was, that was kind of a finalist is what we call alternative number five, is the traditional approach. Plus we added MBR and an MBR basically is a whole series of membranes for filters that we pass the effluent through. This produces very clean water. It's a very good technology, also pretty popular. Um, uh, but in the end we picked alternative one and I'll show you why. So alternative one, these are some older figures, but proportionally they are still good. So alternative one is suspended growth, secondary clarifiers. And you can see that workshop number six, the estimated cost between a hundred and twenty million and two hundred and fifty million. AGS, the estimated cost was a hundred and forty-five to three, three, three twenty. And then the MBR plus the, the traditional approach was a hundred million to a hundred and twenty million. So you can see number one was sec, basically the second most expensive. The AGS system was clearly the most expensive in terms of initial investment. And then the MBR, um, was kind of, was, was the cheapest. When you add though, that bottom section there that notes, that's the, the total chemical cost, total energy cost and the maintenance and operations of the facility. You can see that, um, the, the MBR system is very expensive, three times, more than three times the other ones. So on a lifecycle cost, that becomes a very expensive plant to operate. The AGS system was a little bit cheaper, um, it's kind of comparable with the suspended growth. But in the end, we selected alternative one as the best alternative for that lifecycle cost that we talked about, the initial cost. And then one of the biggest factors is, this is a system that is very popular. This is the most popular system of wastewater treatment across the nation. So there's lots of people that know how to do this. And so when we're, when we need to find operators, there's people that we can find that, that can help out, helps operate the plant. So that was the recommended project that we are moving forward with at this time. So the last slide before I turn it over to Ryan is this, this graph just shows the different stages. And I talked about those timeframes, but the takeaway on that is the bottom portion of this shows some costs. When you add all those costs up in today's dollars, the cost of, of this upgrade is estimated at, um, two hundred and twenty-three million dollars to, to complete this, and that's in today's dollar. So that doesn't count. Um, the inflation that we know is going to happen over the next several years before we have to build this, it doesn't factor in a lot of contingencies. And so in today's dollars, two hundred and twenty-three, but we're telling people it's going to cost more than that to make sure that we cover ourselves and we, um, bond adequately. So I think with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan and Ryan's going to walk us through basically now that I gave you all this wonderful news, then it's going to cost two hundred and twenty-three plus, what are we going to do now? So.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Ryan Martin, Medford CFO and Deputy City Manager. Um, and you know, pointing out kind of the, the financing plan on the Gantt chart that John provided. Um, initially, there are, there are some benefits to this in that all the financing does not have to happen at one time. Um, we're hoping that in a couple of years, interest rates decline a bit, um, that we get a little bit more favorable interest rates. As we're looking at financing likely over thirty years, um, a small interest rate reduction can actually make a pretty big impact overall for a thirty-year period of time. Um, so we're looking at financing this in a couple of ways. The first one is WIFIA, which is the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. It's, um, it's by the EPA and, um, the benefit to this is, well, there's a couple of benefits. Number one is a lot of times interest rates can be lower, um, than traditional issuing of revenue bonds. Um, so that's one benefit. Also, um, there's a little bit more favorable payback period. So sometimes you don't have to pay, start paying back until five years until, or five years after the project is done. Um, one of the drawbacks is that it's, it can only cover forty-nine percent of the project. Where revenue bonds could cover the entire project. Also there are, um, it's a negotiation period or a negotiation between the EPA and the city where we don't know exactly what the interest rates are going to be, the payback terms, it's all a negotiation at the end. Um, and so we're looking at kind of leveraging that with revenue bonds because we know we can issue revenue bonds for whatever the entire project cost is. Um, and we'll look at, um, the entire project cost over the thirty years. So, um, for example, uh, with WIFIA, they could have more favorable payback terms and lower interest rates, but they also have federal requirements that we have to adhere to, like the buy America, build America, where a certain portion of the project has to be, um, we have to purchase supplies from the United States. Um, and that could actually push the project cost up. So we're going to weigh all this as we go along. Uh, one thing I told the other cities in our council is that we never like to come forward and say we're asking for any money, but let alone three hundred, um, million dollars with inflation and contingency with so many unknowns. But the unfortunate thing is there are a lot of unknowns at this time because we don't know where interest rates are going to be. Um, projects of this magnitude never seem to go quite according to plan. And so, um, sometimes, uh, there's different financing needed at different times. So, um, what we can guarantee is that we're going to try to minimize the impact to the ratepayers. Um, so as we mentioned, uh, because the project happens at different, uh, different times, we're not looking to issue bonds for three hundred million dollars tomorrow and increase the rates by the amount that they're going to have to increase by. We're going to borrow the money when we need it. Um, so the initial, um, as far as the chart goes, uh, the initial twenty million dollars, uh, is likely going to be issued in this biennium. Um, and then after that, as we look forward two to three years and the rest of the money is needed, that's when we're kind of hoping that interest rates decrease. Um, so our timeline right now is tomorrow, um, we're, we're bringing to our city council, the bonding authorization resolution. Um, this is a resolution to approve up to three hundred million dollars. Um, we're estimating with inflation and contingency, we're probably more around two hundred and eighty million dollars. But there's a sixty-day waiting period, um, after it's published in the paper, which will be on August fourth. Um, so there's that waiting period before we can really continue, um, with a lot of this. And so, um, to avoid potentially having to go back through that, we are, um, looking to have our council authorize a little bit more than we think that we're going to need. Um, on August, on, on October third, possibly sooner, we're looking at having a letter of intent submitted to WIFIA. Um, it's kind of an odd process in that you have to submit a letter of intent, which is a lot of the technical documents and engineering. And after that, if they approve that, then they formally allow you to apply. So this is not even the application for it. Um, so in March or earlier, we're looking at having the WIFIA application submitted. Um, and then in June of twenty twenty-four, we're looking at likely issuing the first revenue bonds. Hopefully WIFIA will be approved at that time and we can kind of choose between which one's more advantageous, um, for this project. Uh, and then in June, uh, or July of twenty-six and July of twenty-eight is when we would likely issue the second and third bonds or second and third loans from WIFIA. Um, the unfortunate part, uh, that none of us like is the utility rate increases that are going to be needed, um, to help pay for this project. On everybody's sewer bill, there's two different fees, there's the sewer collection fee and there's the sewer treatment fee. So just to be clear, that entire bill is not going to triple. Um, but there is likely a three hundred percent increase in the sewer treatment portion. And the city of Medford and Rogue Valley Sewer, so Rogue Valley Sewer covers part of Medford and then And the city of Medford and Rogue Valley Sewer, so Rogue Valley Sewer covers part of Medford, and then all the surrounding cities and unincorporated areas. That utilize this plant. The sewer treatment fee is the same for all of those. So it's nine dollars and seventy nine cents per month for a single family residence. The estimated sewer treatment rate at the completion of the project is going to be over thirty dollars. So this is. Not something that we like to present. We dislike it as much as anybody else, but unfortunately, it's just. The nature of the situation that we're in. So that's going to happen over probably the next six to eight years. Possibly with some of the WIFIA financing, if we can start paying back later. Without having to pay interest, then the rates could be. Could trail off a little bit more into the future, so maybe ten years into the future. But that's all we have to present. John and I are happy to answer any hard hitting questions that you may have.
Ryan, I have a question.
Yes.
Hector is by my cot now? Sorry, I took it down for all the interference. Ryan, are these utility rate increase estimates? Based off of Medford getting the WIFIA loan, or is this in the event that the WIFIA loan is not granted or accepted?
This was using. This was using a fairly conservative interest rate, not knowing what the WIFIA interest rate might be. So even with revenue bonds a year from now, we have no idea what they might be, but we're looking at about a four and a half percent interest rate. Over the thirty years, so it it could be a combination of both. We just, we have no way to know what that interest rate might be. What I will say is it does include includes inflation for the project, includes the additional employees that are needed to operate the plant. With the much larger footprint, there are more employees that will be needed. It includes the total cost of compensation for all those employees, so the salary and the benefits, and also inflation over time for those employees as well.
Yeah, the other thing that it also does, it adds some contingencies to the project. Because, you know, we know projects like this never go as planned, and so we added some additional costs in there as well. Because we know that stuff's going to pop up.
So is it safe to say that if interest rates are lower than four and a half percent? Our talent users can expect a lower increase their bill, or if the interest rates are higher than four and a half percent, they might see a higher increase of their bill.
Yes, that would be accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so how how is this going to be phased in? Is it going to be just boom thirty bucks or? How 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 is that going to?
Good question. So the the first portion of it, back up to this chart. The initial rate increases, so let's say for maybe the next two years are going to be fairly minimal. So twenty million out of. The two hundred and twenty one million in today's dollars will happen in this biennium. And then as we look forward into. Fall of twenty twenty six, that's when the bulk of the project needs to start and the bulk of the funding. Will need to be issued via bonds or loans. So I would say for the next two to three years, minimal impacts, then it'll start to go up pretty significantly. Probably in twenty twenty six to twenty twenty eight.
Well, one thing I would add is. When we increased our. The city of Medford increased our sewer collection fee, we did an analysis just last year. And we did an analysis, a comparison to all other cities, not all, every city in Oregon, but a huge majority of the cities in Oregon, we took a look at. And our sewer collection fee was amongst the lowest in the entire in the state. It was very, very low. At thirty dollars, it kind of puts us in the middle of the pack. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest, we're kind of average now. And so. That's a big increase, as Ryan said, none of us like feel wonderful about that, that ratepayers are going to have to pay that. But I would note that in comparison to many other cities, this is pretty a pretty average treatment fee. Now, try to sell that to like the ratepayers and make them feel good. I get that.
It does. And also, I guess we can't expect, you know, there, you know, people think, oh, once the thing's been built, the money's been spent and. Recouped and everything, but that's the maintenance. Well, the 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 rates aren't going to go down from thirty dollars at any point as a result of the completion of the project or paying off the bond. Is that right?
I don't see them going down.
Yeah. They should stabilize.
Yeah.
Thirty dollars for.
I mean, until the bonds paid off, which, you know, we don't even know that term yet. But that's going to be.
Thirty years, right?
Yeah, well, we don't know. Yeah, we're not sure yet. Yeah.
Okay.
But by that time, you know, other inflationary factors will influence the plan. I would be surprised if we could ever lower it. Because by the time the bond's paid off, there's going to be a bunch of other factors influencing the cost.
There's a question on timing, you know, recognize that this is because there's new permit requirements for the EPA. This will be built in twenty thirty, matching capacity in twenty forty five. Does the design of this facility also incorporate potential additional requirements by the EPA down the road? Or will we have to face potentially another expansion or change of facility after twenty forty five?
So. As far as additional things that I have no idea what they're going to issue in five years, it doesn't do that, but. There was some phosphorus limits that they were kind of on the fence for. We incorporated those things into the plant to make sure that we could to to deal with those. There were some of those things that we kind of got a hint, let's make sure that we treat at this level to protect ourselves, but if they if something pops up in the future that I don't know about. Well, I think, for example, I think a lot of people have heard about PFOS. They're called forever chemicals, and it's becoming talked about more and more. This plant can't treat PFOS, and frankly, no plants in that it can can treat PFOS right now. And so something was to pop up tomorrow that says you have to treat PFOS, this plant won't do it. But nobody, nobody else can either, and we're going to have to figure out how to do it. So I think we're, we have some contingency built in for potential things that DEQ might do. But I can't, I don't know what all of them are, so I could never say, yeah, we're going to be fine for the next thirty years.
Can I ask a kind of a related question? So with these upgrades that you're doing, the objective is to meet the meet the standards that are being imposed. Will the work that's being done enable the plant to do to to reach higher standards if that? Becomes the case?
Absolutely. So I'll give you an example, we, and I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but. This is relative. So we have to remove in the neighborhood of seventy five to eighty percent of total suspended solids. And so it's total suspended solids with little floaters you have in the water. And we have to remove, you know, some of the neighborhood of seventy five to eighty percent of those per the permit. We currently remove about ninety seven to ninety eight percent. We have, we're we're well exceeding the permit. This plant would continue that practice where the standards here, we're going to be able to treat it here. So if they increase that, we would be good for a while. Now, if they said a hundred percent, then this plant would, you know. They can't do that because nobody knows how to remove everything.
So is it a capacity issue then? Generally, I mean, it sounds to me like it currently can meet those standards. Is is this extra building that needs to happen have anything to do with capacity?
No, it's not a, well, I mean, it's a capacity. I touched on this a little bit during the presentation, so. We don't have a capacity problem with the plant today. It, we're meeting all permit conditions. We're treating all the effluent and meeting the permit conditions and 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 adhering to that. But the way that the the recommended alternative, what it's doing is. We're allowing those microorganisms longer to process the the waste stream. So we're adding a whole bunch of capacity in the plant to basically allow those microbes to chomp on. The the waste for a lot longer time period. And that's that's how you get this increased treatment. And so we're adding a whole new aeration tank, they're adding six new secondary clarifiers. We're just adding a whole bunch of additional treatment. And so is that a capacity issue? Yes. But it's really being done to to provide a greater level of treatment.
Gotcha. It could spend more time on the land as.
Exactly, yeah. And if you think about like, you know, scrubbing your floor, the more you scrub it, the cleaner it is, and that's kind of what this is doing.
Gotcha. Thanks for, thanks for that clarification. I didn't catch it in the presentation.
So. As far as, so we're pretty much deciding, y'all decided to stay with the current technology. Versus some of these other technologies, and one of the reasons was is because it is the most popular in the US, so people know how to do it. I'm wondering if you looked at, if you did any comparison and see which of the technologies is there? If any of them are gaining more popularity more rapidly, which might indicate that they are like the. Technology of the future for whatever reason, so.
So I think that, you know, the the one is that AGS system is is kind of talked about, maybe a technology of the future. There's, there's only like three or four.
European one?
That's the European one. And there's only like three or four plants in the United States that are doing this right now. It's not a, it's it's not popular at all. And in Europe, it's not even that popular. It's, there's a lot more in Europe than there are in the United States. But it's not something like this is the primary technology in Europe, not by a long shot. MBR, which is that membrane filter, which was alternative five. That's really not a new technology. That's been around a long time, and it does produce some very clean water, but it is just. So expensive to operate. It is horribly expensive to operate, and and I think from. Lifecycle costs of looking out for the ratepayers, that one really scares us because. It it might be the cheapest in infrastructure today, but when you take a twenty year cost, are we really treating our ratepayers right? I I don't know if that answers your question, Eleanor. We we looked at, you know, the consultant looked at a whole bunch of stuff, and these were kind of the three winners. AGS is kind of that new cool one that some people talk about, but it's, it it makes us nervous because it's proprietary. And it's kind of black box, and it's not very popular.
Great. Well, I love the little shop first, I think.
Donna, Ryan, what's the best way for us to let our community members know to follow along on the project to get updates?
So we we will be keeping, I mean, just like today, we're going to try our best to keep the, because, I mean, you represent. You know, this left body represents all the ratepayers in your city, so we want to do everything we can to keep you informed. That's why we had the meeting last month. We want to continue to outreach every time there's a significant milestone to update you, and so we'll be doing some reach out. And then I guess I'd ask you. Jordan, what do you need from us to help you keep your, the ratepayers and your your citizens informed?
Yeah, well, I'll share, you know, always welcome and always love having you guys here to share the information directly so that the council can ask questions. If you guys have a project website or anything like that, please send it our way. We'll push it out in our city communication so that community members can follow along too. You know, we're here to help community know what's coming. Also to help support the process and make sure the project is done so that we can meet the requirements to keep our waterways clean.
Regional Rate Committee too, and the Regional Rate Committee, you know, so Rogue Valley Sewer represents talent at the Regional Rate Committee. To to help set these rates, so. I clearly lean on Carl Tappert, RVSS, to also keep you informed on that.
Dave Lom.
Just curious, is the Rogue Valley kind of alone in this fix, or are there other cities in in Oregon or or the Northwest who are facing? Similar kind of more stringent standards that have to be met?
So, Dave, thanks for that question, because I I didn't touch on it much in my presentation. You know, I talked about the lawsuit, and there's no question that the lawsuit influenced DEQ's, how aggressive they were. I think that's pretty obvious that, you know, that DEQ is sensitive to the lawsuit. They were trying to, you know, balance the needs. And so they were aggressive in this permit. That being said, nitrogen and phosphorus levels are being dialed down everywhere. Every every one of these new MPDS permits that is coming out, there we're seeing reduced levels of nitrogen and phosphorus. And nitrogen and phosphorus are are key polluters in terms of growing algae and in the river and everything else. And so they're dialing that down pretty much across the board. We had, we have one of the bigger ones. Ours is a pretty dandy one, but we're seeing that lots of places.
So is there, if I may, is there any any prospect of some additional? Help from the state or for the feds with these costs to meet these stricter standards?
We have continued to ask that question. We took a trip back to Washington DC. And last March and met with EPA to ask that specific question. They didn't say hell no, but it was pretty close to that. It was. We're not finding a lot of grant programs, a lot of assistance beyond the the low interest loans, the WIFIA loans, and. They were equipped to do that, and they have a lot of money in the WIFIA program right now, that they were very positive that we would be a strong candidate for that, so. We're feeling pretty positive, but as far as grants and just outright allocations, there's not much out there for that. And at the state level, there's very little.
Well, if I may comment, I I do know that getting that lower interest rate can make a big difference, so that's a help.
Yes.
So, so it's going to be RVSS that actually does the rate increase. They'll pass it, it's basically passed through to them. And they're a service district, and they, you know, they are completely funded by the ratepayers, although they. They could charge the property tax if they wanted to, because they're a service district that they chose not to.
Right.
Has there been any conversation about them actually maybe looking towards? Picking up. Another source of revenue like property tax?
We have not had that conversation with RBS, and I don't know if that's something they're considering or not, but that's a very interesting question that. I didn't, in all honesty, I didn't know that RBS could do that in terms of property tax, and so I'll.
Can, and that they just chose not to after a certain point, to make it completely funded by the ratepayers. Carl knows, this is my memory of a conversation with Carl.
Yeah, I'll 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 ask Carl about that.
Yeah, I mean, they may not have an appetite for it, but it might be, you know.
Right.
A way, a different, a different approach.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I have just one more question about the financing, Ryan. You know, there's pros and cons to paying as we borrow. It was there, was there any discussion about incrementally raising the rates until until we get there? And then is that allowed and 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 then banking some of that, so not as much borrowing needs to happen? With and not really. No, not as much borrowing means that some of that money has no interest rate, right? So was there any discussion about that?
Well. We know, but we don't have to incrementally do it. With that said, if we were to borrow, let's say, more money up by upfront, you typically have a certain period of time that you can use it. As you gain, as you as you earn interest on it, there's. Complex issues where you have to pay back money to the federal government if you earn more interest than the rate that you borrow at. So to make it more simplistic in that term, in those terms, also to minimize the impact, we know we're probably going to have to issue at least two times. So that initial one of twenty million dollars where the raise would increase a little bit for that. What we have looked at is for that second large chunk, there's a possibility that we can do. The projects that are in green on this screen concurrently with the ones that are in this blue color right here. So we'd have to do one less bond issuance, but. The fact of the matter is, the bond issuance costs are not really that much in proportion to the project. It's probably less than a hundred thousand dollars per issuance for, you know, almost three hundred million dollar borrowing, so. I don't know if I completely answered your question.
Yeah, you know what I was thinking about is, I remember when the Duff Treatment Plant was talking about doing a second treatment Duff two. And they were, they were considering raising the rates as they headed towards the project. I might be remembering this wrong, but. It seemed, and they were going to do it incrementally, and it seemed the the reason for that was so that. By the time they got there, they would have, it's sort of that savings account mentality rather than the credit card. Kind of a thing and or borrowing and and paying back. And I don't, I I just was wondering if it was. If it was. It was a matter of it not being allowed to to do that, or or maybe I just don't remember the the approach that Duff was taking. On that, do you remember, John?
I I don't, but I would add that in July one, RBS did raise rates, they raised them ten percent. And five percent was to cover the inflation of of the plant, but five percent was also. In a a dedicated fund for future upgrades of the plant, so we have started that a little bit. I mean, it's five percent increase over the existing rate, so it's not a huge amount of money, but we have started that to some degree.
Yeah, well, I trust that you have, you know, vetted this out. And that's not, I definitely don't want to give that impression. I just, I'm just curious of what's allowed and what's not allowed, you know, and. Good presentation.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, thanks for having, thanks for writing us.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, thanks, Ryan. Hector, do you want to stay logged in and just go? Great.